Counsel? Yes. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Mayor Xander is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Here. Going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Friday, April 5th at 6:00 PM and Sunday, April 7th at 6:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. Can I ask Daryl to lead the pledge, please? And then I invite the audience to remain standing for invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call on Julie Steinberg to give the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are fortunate to live, work, and play in this wonderful city of Rancho Cordova. Encourage our leaders to make sensible decisions that consider the diversity of our residents. Empower our community to make positive changes to ensure our safety and well-being. Motivate us to foster a caring environment in our neighborhoods. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, presentation time. So we have our first proclamation, and I ask Janice Davis and Ricky Davis to come up to receive their proclamation for blessings in a backpack.
Let me get this out of the way for the picture. We'll get rid of that.
Would you like to say something?
No, not a thing.
There you go.
I'm shy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We now have the proclamation for the Fair Housing Month, and I call on Akila Williams.
Okay, well, as the resident housing guy around here, they asked me to do this one. And this is actually shorter than a lot of the ones, so I guess I'll read the whole thing, which I usually don't. So we have a proclamation given in recognition of Fair Housing Month. So whereas adequate housing is a basic need and right of all people, and this year we celebrate the 56th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act, which states discrimination in the scale and rental of housing is illegal when based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 extends fair housing rights on the basis of familiar status to families with children and on the basis of handicap to disabled persons. Whereas Project Sentinel has been engaged in the Rancho Cordova community for many years, and whereas Project Sentinel has educated residents on their housing rights, defended residents against discrimination, and helped the vulnerable residents keep their homes. To heighten public awareness, the city of Rancho Cordova wishes to focus public attention on April as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize April as Fair Housing Month and encourages all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities of neighbors and to support the goal of equal housing opportunities for all people. In witness hereof, or whereof, excuse me, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this second day of April 2024, and it was signed by our mayor, who is off doing other duties tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next presentation, I'm looking forward to it. It's a special presentation and an invitation from eSports Gaming. And I call on Donna Walters. See, I told you I was excited for this one.
Councilmembers, we have traveled from galaxies far away to deliver an important message on behalf of the Galactic Empire. On May 4th, City Hall will be transformed into a temporary base under the guise of a municipal community event in order to seek out and identify rebel spies. This event will be called a Scholastic Gaming and eSports Expo and will host a variety of activities designed to attract rebel enemies. Activities will include cosplay contests and workshops, video game tournaments, scholastic and developer showcase, prizes and giveaways, and tabletop tournaments that are going to support UC Davis Children's Hospital. Your presence is required. This is not a request. You may now ask questions.
You invited him.
Hey. When I invite somebody, this is how they enter, so. Yeah. Please try to follow up.
Absolutely.
No, thank you so much. I have no questions. I'm really looking forward to you being here in our city.
Thank you.
Photos are now permitted.
So do you want, do you want actual gamers to come in?
Absolutely.
What games are we going to be, are they going to do competitions all the way up? Or what type of games are you guys going to be playing?
So what we're going to do is because it's being held in City Hall, this is going to be more of a community-focused event. So we're bringing all of the gaming and eSports leaders, local leaders, community developers here to City Hall. We do not have the internet bandwidth for AAA title. However, we are going to bring in some Nintendo Switch games. Those are to be determined, however, most likely will include Just Dance, Overcooked 2, possibly a Star Wars-themed game. So those are in the works.
About Smash Bros. About Smash Bros.
I can't do Smash Bros. under Nintendo's new policy. However, we will have open play with Smash Bros. So, yes, but not a tournament officially.
Just so we all know, Little Gatewood plays in lots and lots of tournaments, Smash Bros., and so he's an e-gaming pro.
Those are play-along games, Linda, like Just Dance. You play along with them. They dance and you follow through.
Linda will be doing, Linda knows Just Dance. Don't get whooped on it. Linda, show them. Kill it. To you. Bring it back.
This is like the lady in the Verizon ad or whatever it is.
I would like to invite our special guest to maybe say a word or two about the 501st Legion and the Sacramento Garrison. They are also Rancho Cordova residents. When they are not on the Death Star, of course.
That's fabulous.
They have participated before. We have seen them at, like, the.
Hello, yeah, we do reside in our summer home in Rancho Cordova when we're not on the Death Star. And we're just excited to be here, so thank you for the invitation, and we're looking forward to the event. We are members of the 501st Legion, which is an all-volunteer costuming club nationwide that we make movie-accurate costumes and then use them for community events to share our love of Star Wars.
That's awesome. You guys are awesome.
Counsel, do you, time for a picture if you guys want to do a picture down there with the stormtroopers.
And sometimes they are a little bit difficult to hear, so apologies for the overtalk there.
That's the first of myself and the city manager suggest that and then jump out of his chair.
No, I really want to hear what you have to say. Talk directly into the mic. Say sin.
We're going to do a couple. Say "yip-yip."
Yip-yip!
Yip-yip!
Here we go. Thank you.
All right, action shot. Come on now.
We have some Harrison Ford look-alikes here.
Oh, yeah, our birthday. Hey, Linda, could you go back up?
Yeah, Linda, stand right there.
Star Wars birthday.
Linda, you can stand right there.
Star Wars birthday, Linda.
Yeah, that leads us to our next item. We're going to have a birthday song.
Yay, with Star Wars. Someone get the recording. This will never happen again because she's going to kill one of us. What? No Star Wars singing?
It's recording.
Oh, I know. I know, but I was saying, like, Linda will kill one of us in process.
Ready, audience?
Ready.
Here we go.
Happy birthday to you, Star Wars. Happy birthday to you, Death Star. Happy birthday, dear Linda, Dark Lord. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councilmembers. If anybody would like to take photos with our stormtroopers, then please feel free to head out to the lobby.
Awesome.
And thank you very much for having us.
Counsel send adjourned.
Thank you. And that's how you kick off a first meeting.
That is dope. Let's go. Sorry, Lindy, that's fucked up. I don't know what to do.
Okay. So, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers may be called by the vice mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. The city clerk to announce for public comment.
Yes, we have one public comment at this time for general public comment. Jessa Rego, if you could come forward, you'll have up to three minutes.
Double duty, okay. All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Jessa Rego. I live in Folsom, but I work here in Rancho Cordova. Both my day job, my office headquarters is here, and in my side hustle, I do business with other businesses here. The main point of my comment tonight is on behalf of the Muslim community of Rancho Cordova to add a personal touch to an upcoming invitation that they will be sending you very soon to a community iftar next Monday evening at the Islamic Society of Rancho Cordova. And to explain that a little bit, in case anybody is not aware, it's the month of Ramadan where Muslims fast during daylight hours. And so iftar is the breaking of the fast at sunset. And interesting, you know, kind of side note, I'm not personally Muslim myself, but I am part of a really broad and diverse coalition that has been coming together around the Muslim community. If you recall, at the last meeting, a few of us were here. The Muslim community had presented to the council a draft of their proposed ceasefire resolution that they were asking the council to consider and to consider putting on the agenda. Check my time here. And, you know, we all said our piece, and I know I, last time, I kind of came in really hot, and I had to present what I thought were all the biggest issues of this issue. Because, you know, to us, this very diverse community that is lobbying at all levels of government, especially the federal government for a ceasefire, this really is an emergency, and it really is affecting us here locally. But we also recognize that people are coming from a lot of different backgrounds on this and a lot of different starting places. And, you know, we may not know what is, you know, the connection to you that would make this most relevant at the city level. And we understand cities don't take on international issues, but that relationship between the city and the federal government. So anyway, these, you know, public comments are so short. It's such a big issue. It's really hard to fit everything into a three-minute comment. And so that's why they really wanted to extend this invitation to iftar next week to be a more community event without the pressure to have time to chat and talk and have education and really learn about the community and why this issue is so important to us and why we are going to, you know, keep lobbying on it. So I really thank you for your time and consideration, and I think that's it. Emails, you will be getting invitations by email very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pulapati, that's all the public comment that we have.
Thank you. I think I'll start with the council members on their report. Councilmember Gatewood.
Since we have a meeting every two days, the only, literally every two days, the only thing I have to report is we had a great session where we talked about visioning. That was awesome. And then I met with the library board. Good news, we are still, still under budget. We tapped for 100 grand, but that was just to buy more IT stuff. The only thing that's really running into problems is the libraries in downtown SAC are becoming increasingly more unsafe. And, and they were thinking adding more cops to the solution was the answer, and I came back with, maybe it's time, since we've now tried more cops and more cops and more security, that we try something like counselors and other people that might be engagement with the homeless, like outreach people like we do in Rancho. And navigators, I went through, I was like, maybe we should just get, you know, because they have navigators, but they only have them at the junior level. They're not full-time navigators. So we as a whole are starting to look at, like, really employed navigators to start working in the libraries, since that happens to be where a lot of the homeless community goes, and we might be able to actually help them because that happens to be a warm, safe space. And if that's going to be the safe space that we can do counseling, I don't really think extra security at this point is going to help fix a problem when you have people that need a lot of help. So we're going to try something different, which is probably more counselors because, especially in the downtown area. It's not really affecting the suburbs, but really in downtown SAC, it's just become really unsafe at the library. That's it. Thank you.
So my report is equally brief, because that's probably about calling a dog. We did have a very engaged, lively council retreat. That was very nice. It's, we haven't had one in quite some time, and it was refreshing to get together again. The HCP, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation, JPA met and adopted a new preserve. And for people who are familiar with the Silver Spring project that is basically at the northwest corner of Calvine and Excelsior, just north of Elk Grove, they're planning to build out of a few more houses in there. And so the preserve that surrounds Silver Spring needed to be expanded, and that's what was on our agenda. And today, I tuned in to the Rotary meeting here in Rancho Cordova. And I will tell you, a gentleman who is a 1991 grad of Cordova High, whose name is John Morris Rowe, spoke. He is a foreign service officer and has been for quite some time with the State Department. And he has lived in at least six countries and speaks at least four languages. And they are kind of like the military police for the secrets, for the diplomatic corps. And so his job has been absolutely fascinating. He has served in Haiti during the 2009 earthquake to preserve security for people coming and going across the Haiti-Dominican Republic border. He has served in Oman, Jordan. He has served in Thailand. He's served in all sorts of places. And his family has gone along with him on a lot of these particular mission assignments. And it was absolutely fascinating, and it's one of these people that you could talk to for another two hours and ask all sorts of questions and just hear the most fascinating information. And I really appreciate Rotary. We're all honorary members of Rotary, and I appreciate them keeping us on the mailing list so that we could take advantages of things like that.
I love their meeting minutes, and I've told them many, many times. Councilmember Terry.
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo the visioning session that we had last week was, was great. And a nice change of pace from what felt like the same visioning session over the last six years or so to, like, we kind of, well, aside from doing it online when there was a pandemic, that was a little different. So just a couple of updates. We, Siri and I both had a series of meetings with Elk Grove Unified, with the district, with a group of family, or parents and other folks. And I've shared this at the visioning session, but I'll just share it with the public. And Siri, you can weigh in on your interpretation. But Elk Grove Unified has basically announced a five-year plan to build the next high school, junior high, and the fourth elementary school that will take very specific steps to get there, some of which is out of the control of the school district or this region, because we do need to get another state bond put on, put on the ballot and approved. For new schools in California, basically the math works out that half of the money comes from state bonds. The other, the other half comes from local funds and local bonds. But one of the plans also is there's a need to pass another school bond in Elk Grove. So some of us are engaged with what that effort might look like and how much and what that bond may look like. But for a part of town that, it's a significant part of Rancho Cordova, but it's a very small part of a very large school district that not only includes the city of Elk Grove and portions of Rancho Cordova, but a very large amount of unincorporated county, and I believe even part of the city of Sacramento. It does. And so we're talking about a very, very, I mean, triple the size of the city as far as population, this city. And so lots of conversations to move forward, but it is really exciting to be able to share with our neighbors that there is an effort to looking at trying to build a high school within five years, which we hadn't gotten the school district to say that until they finished their facilities plan and came up with what it would cost to build everything. SAC Metro Air District met last week. They also had a reception with Congresswoman Matt Suie. I had to join remotely because I had to be in Fresno for work. But one exciting thing that was a part of that meeting was an allocation of 1.2 million dollars for low-emission vehicles, basically zero-emission school buses for Folsom, Cordova. So that was a nice grant to see come across. I believe that's going to cover, it'll help them, it'll help them buy three more buses. And the really nice thing is they have to deploy them in their low-income parts of their district. So they're probably all going to be driving around here, not Folsom.
So when you say low emission, is.
Electric, electric buses.
They are electric. That's great.
Yeah, so when I was chair of that district in 14 through 16, the first electric buses ever purchased for a school district in this country were Twin Rivers. And then they did three or four with Elk Grove, three or four with Folsom, Cordova. But the largest electric bus fleet in the country is in Sacramento through that program.
Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh has a wonderful ad. It's a partnership with PG&E, and they've actually got a solar farm and a wind farm, miniature scale, on some of their property. And then their school buses are all electric.
Yeah, yeah, there.
It's a great goal.
There's been, there's been a lot of funding for it recently. Some of the really interesting things that you wouldn't think that you'd need to have on a school bus is an electric school bus. Because it's so quiet, it plays sounds through a speaker in the front to make sure kids know that the bus is coming so that they get out of the street. Because if not, it's rolling very quietly. So, yeah, there's just a couple of the things that you wouldn't necessarily jump at that.
Anybody who drives an electric car knows that you really can't just run up on people because they don't hear you coming. You've got to be sure you know they're there, or they know you're there.
Yeah, so they, so, so these school buses still make noise on purpose.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there were these three, but in general, yeah, I want to say the programs are, you know, getting close to almost 50 that have been ordered or bought. But it's been going on for six, seven years now. Yeah. So that was really cool. And then to the man who gave us the public comment and invited us to the iftar dinner, thank you for your comments, and you had said something about being hot when you were here last time. I've been in meetings where people have gotten hot. I would never have put you in that category. I think the people that came, if you juxtapose what your comments were made at our last meeting and compare that to what happened at the city of Sacramento, like, you were thoughtful, you were passionate, you care about something, and thank you for sharing that. I wish I could go to the iftar dinner. I think the date that you said, I don't think I can make it because my wife is going to be out of town, and so I won't be able to make it. But I have attended the CARE Dinner a handful of times down at the Capitol. It's a wonderful community, and you're standing up for what you believe in, and there's a lot of bad things happening that you described. And we appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us. So, and doing it in a really respectful manner, so thank you.
Thank you. So as councilmembers mentioned, we did have a really good visioning session. A retreat sounds really fancy. We were right down the hall, down the road. Yeah, yeah, down the road. So thank you, Chief Tamayo, for, also during the visioning session, we got a chance to tour the police station. And, well, let me just tell you that they're watching. They know everything that's happening in Rancho Cordova. I was impressed. It was my first time touring, and I also taken notes that I'll be going to ISC West, which is like a video surveillance conference in Vegas next week. So I'll be looking to see what the latest technologies and bringing back to you, chief. As Councilmember Terry mentioned, the Elk Grove School Board, we had multiple meetings with them, both with the board and also with the parent coalition, and definitely made a lot of progress, definitely answered the questions that the parents have. We now have in writing from the Elk Grove School Board about the timeline for the middle high school and when it's going to start, which is going to be 2930. It's going to be a phased approach for the middle school and the high school. Myself and my assistant manager David attended an iftar dinner earlier last week at the Salaam Mosque, so it was really good, yummy food. The one thing that I did, which I shouldn't have done, is I tried to fast all day. And then at the end of it, I, it was extremely hard. So doing it for 30 days, it's, I mean, it's amazing. So thank you for the invite. I really appreciate it, and I would really encourage my councilmembers to definitely attend if they can. And myself and Councilmember Gatewood, along with city staff and city manager, went with a tour with Congressman Ami Barra this morning. We went to the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, and I think we did the White Rock Rancho Cordova Road to see what's happening over there and how his money is being invested in our city. With that, that's the end of my report, and I pass it on to the city manager.
Sure. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Pulapati. Just a couple of things from me that are actually repeats of some of the items that we're already talking about. First is. First is vision, values, and governance discussion that we had with the city council. Really appreciate you spending the time and having that conversation slash retreat discussion. Really appreciate it, and we'll be having some future conversations kind of with the outcomes and next steps with, based on the direction and conversation that day. So we really look forward to that next step in the process. I mean, we did have the nice opportunity to tour with Congressman Bera earlier today on basically sites and things that he helped fund and helped put some federal dollars to, which is, you know, the youth center, White Rock Road, and Mather Veterans Village. And actually, just recently, Mather Veterans Village received an additional $1 million grant from the community grant process with the congressman. So really thankful for that. And we look forward to lots of future projects and partnerships with the, with our federal partners in doing projects that deliver new community services to the city of Rancho Cordova. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Are there any items council wishes to pull from the consent calendar?
We have public comment.
We have public comment for item 9.6 on the consent calendar.
I'll move the balance of the calendar excluding 9.6.
Second.
Who was the second? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One of them.
And we have public comment on...
Let's take the vote on this.
Okay.
So I'm going to do a roll call vote for the motion that Councilmember Terry just made. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we go to public? Can we get the public comment now?
So we'll take item number 9.6, and we'll start with James Garcia. Following James Garcia will be Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. Reason why I wanted to bring this one up is we went with the lowest bidder on this particular one. And it's been stated in the past that, well, we don't always want to go with the lowest bidder. Example was the, our waste trash pickup with Atlas and Republic. Republic was the lowest bidder on that particular one, but we didn't go with them. So I'm just hoping that with this one, since Atlas also had built into their contract potential extra fees coming up into their contract, if, say, the way station there at Kefir charges a little more, that gets passed on to the residents. So I'm hoping that this one doesn't have any cost overruns that get passed on to the residents here. So that's my biggest concern is contracts, government contracts tend to get cost overruns all the time on them. Building a freeways, they get bonuses for building it faster than before. Also knowing that this particular property here is for the Mills Crossing process, property project that we're doing, and it has been something that the city's owned for a long time. We knew that it was a former cleaners, and it was toxic land that we now have to go and clean up. Just a little concerned as to why it took so long to decide to clean it up. We could have done this at a lot cheaper cost years ago. So that's my big concern with this is cost overruns and expenditures, so, and going with the lowest bidder. So, thanks.
I'm Helen Wayland-Bishaw from the Tiffany area. I do have questions about the fact that in this particular case, we took the lowest bid. This is, could be an EPA violation. We've known that there was a minimum of a cleaners there years ago. I remember when the cleaners was there, because they've been in the area. And the city purchased the land, not yesterday, but years ago. Cost continually increased, so why did the city wait so long to decide to clean the land up when they should have done it back when, after they purchased it? And I would have thought something in the purchase costs would have addressed the fact that we knew the city was buying a toxic piece of property. So what wasn't, so why didn't the city collect something from the seller or have the seller clean up the toxic land rather than push it on the taxpayers? Also with this, when you take the lowest bid, my question is, what type of study did the people do who selected the lowest bid? Do we take into consideration any prior EPA violations by the company that got this? What's the history of this company for overrides? Because we know once a company gets into dire straits, the city seems to bail them out. So we look at the amount of over a million, to clear this up, and my real question is, did taking the lowest bid in this particular case benefit, or will it hinder the city in the long run? With this also, we look at the piece of property. That piece of property has two to three-foot-high weeds on it. So what is, you know, the city's not looking at the property. We're just looking at getting the mill station crossing in there, which the public has already said in the local area, they didn't like the name. We're looking at not putting the garage in there, but yet we're going to be paying all this money to remove toxic chemicals that should have been addressed at the time we purchased the land. Thank you.
Micah, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I'm not sure if we've got staff or who's working-
We do.
-on this, but would that be Stefan, maybe, or-
Yeah, and I'm happy to address a couple of things-
Sure.
Before you ask questions, too.
So, okay, so we have to remember that when the building's on the site, the dry cleaner, the key place, the little thing out front, the old grocery store were demolished, that for many years after that, there actually was soil extraction, not soil extraction, but VOC extraction done on that property. And it was there for quite some time. That probably all happened about, maybe as long ago as 25 years ago, but it went on for quite some time. So, so the first question, when I read the titles of these things, I thought it was a duplicative contract, but it seems that Tetra Tech is being hired to monitor the process, and Pacific States Environmental is being hired to actually do the work. So I want to confirm that. And then, and then the question is, is it because, I mean, I'm aware that as cleanup regulations have changed, there are some properties that might have been cleaned up to a standard that DTSC accepted back 20 years ago and no longer considers accepted. So, so we're having to go back and do it again. So just the difference in the two contracts and what the purpose of the cleanup is.
So I'll let, I'll let the team answer the question about the two contracts, but real briefly, just want to talk about the work that was done. And there is sometimes a changing environment when it comes to government regulations on cleanup and different responsible, you know, kind of activities and what can and can't be done on a piece of property. I will say that the team has worked hard and done a great job of finding state grants for this amount. And so this isn't any local dollars funding into this project. This is actually being funded through a grant through DTSC and other places as well. And so I think that's something that, as we looked at the Mills Crossing project, the team is always looking really hard for other sources of funds, and this was a great win to get basically this cleanup done using other state programs to do this work. And so with that, I will give it over to the team.
But before I talk about the contract-
Sure.
Could you also clarify a couple of other things? Because I know there was an attempt to eminent domain this before I was ever on council. So there was countless studies done, and at one point, the city was claiming a huge discount in the value and the sales price against what the property owner wanted to sell it for or have us buy it for because of all of the toxic cleanup that needed to be done on it. So the city has a whole lot of information and knowledge from years before we ever even contemplated acquiring this land. And there are a multitude of studies that have already been done that we knew about when we purchased all of this property. So none of this is a surprise to anybody, except maybe, except maybe the two public commenters.
And if I, if I may, through the vice mayor.
Sure.
When we, we did try very hard to acquire the property, the price that we were negotiating at the time when they didn't want to sell-
Took an $8 million discount.
Was, was a lot higher than we ended up purchasing it for, so-
And a lot more than we were paying.
So the city's, the city's approach to waiting patiently after that first attempt at condemning the property really did result in finally coming to the point where the family was willing to sell, and the price dropped dramatically, if I recall. And, and then they did actually want to move with a good deal of speed. And so in those circumstances, it is quite common when you get to this point in, in family transactions where they're really ready to sell, there can be a certain real impetus to sell. So I think that the approaches have proved out to have a grant funding to cover the environmental cleanup, something that we did know quite a lot about before we started.
And we assumed it was going to hit our general fund. We had planned to pay for this ourselves.
That's right. And I would add, you know, with a, Tetra Tech is a company just literally right down the block, based here in Rancho still, and so with a close supervision by them, I think it's a good overall package of funding, supervision, and remediation.
So a little bit about the two different contracts. So we do have a state board-approved cleanup plan. So the contractor will be doing the actual excavation and constructions in accordance with that plan. And then Tetra Tech, there's a lot of health and safety monitoring, dust monitoring. So they need to do all that monitoring in compliance with the safety plan and also submit a report at the end of the project. After the contractor is done with their excavation, also included in the Tetra Tech is an additional soil vapor extraction, which requires additional wells that had to be installed, have the soil vapor extraction then removed. And then at the end of it, we have to have additional testing to confirm that we met the requirements of our site cleanup plan, and then they file the final report. So, yes, Tetra Tech's more on the monitoring, reporting side, and the contractor's performing the physical excavation.
Vice Mayor, one more thing. Sometimes as you go through the process, in order to get these grants, you actually have to have a project in mind. You can't actually get access to a lot of cleanup grants unless you actually have a particular project. And part of the interest from the state and DTSC on actually this project was the type of project that is being built as part of the future plan. And so it's more attractive to get grant funds when you actually have a project in mind. So that's why the timing, sometimes you don't do right away. You also go after other sources for funds, otherwise it is something we would have to pay for.
And I would certainly add, it would be very common to lose a deal if you told the seller they had to first clean up.
Yeah. Especially when they had discounted the price so dramatically.
When they discounted it because of the cleanup, which is also why the city tried to eminent domain it at a much reduced price, was to include that cost, which, again, everyone, even people that weren't on the city council at the time that were asked about this when they were running, that said, you know, whether or not they should have questioned the city's approach and how they did that. And I said, well, there are a whole lot of meetings that were in closed session about that item, and I wasn't privy to all of that stuff at the time. But it's all come out as public sense. So, thank you. Good job, staff, for securing the funds. With that, I'll move the item.
Second. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
With that, I'll move on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Any public comments?
We do. Can you open the public hearing?
Okay, open for public hearing. That's why this gavel is here for.
We do have public comment. James Garcia. Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I have some concerns with this. And it's because of the history that I've been attending these meetings for. I've brought up issues with development agreement processes that have been happening. This particular one was originally signed in 2006. It was for 15 years. It took eight years in 2014 to have the First Amendment for it. Property sat vacant. Nothing was done. It had some adjustments to it for adding impact fees, a couple other little ask, and it went, extended it to a total of 18 years. We're now up on 18 years, 2024. This project has not come forward. It wants another five years added. It's, again, how many annual reviews have been done? Not a lot. We've kind of seen that. That is a state requirement that has not been followed. We could have gotten out of these contracts had we have done that, because it's on the city, the city staff failing to actually initiate annual reviews. All you have to do is say, hey, show me where you're in compliance with the development agreement. And if you don't respond, then you can start the termination process. We should be doing that on all of our contracts. Somebody in the city should be doing that, monitoring it, seeing exactly how many contracts we have, how many people they've been actually sending any of them to. It's in the contract on a lot of them, when they actually have to have their annual compliance review. The developers know that. They're not doing it. City's failing to initiate them. Doesn't mean the contracts are all in void, as we have been informed. However, it should be following the state law. So I don't think we need to extend this one anymore. Things have changed, as we've been told. Environmental policies and projects and procedures and everything else has changed. Why are we giving them another five years on an old 2006 historical time period? We don't need to. End it.
Helen?
Hello? Hi, I'm Helen Wayland-Bishaw. I'm going to use a different approach than what James used. I agree with everything he said. I've been attending these meetings ever since you put that $1.8 million, 1.6, which ends up being $2.8 million protected bicycle lane down my street. I started attending this because I wanted to find out what was happening. As far as these extensions due to the contractors, the developers' wishes, we need to stop them. And this is, it's affecting the community, because this contract has been sitting out a long time, and now they want another extension. What does that mean to the community and the houses around it? It means to the people a decrease in their house value, because when people come into an area and they see land sitting dormant, and they do, and if they do any research, and they got a good real estate person, they're going to want to know, why is it so hard to put a development in? Also, the community is losing out on the tax revenue that every construction, every house brings into this community, the property taxes, the taxes we get when they shop at the local markets. It appears to myself that the city has bowed down to the developer. We would like you to listen to the people, because you don't always listen to us when we have a large group here arguing about things going on. You go by what you want to do. You need to look out for the community, the people that live around these developments that aren't being developed, and really look at the builder. The builder had almost more than 15 years to start building, and they're not building. The land's sitting dormant. Why are we going to allow them to extend it when environmental issues have changed? Make them, don't let them extend it. Make them reapply and make them conform to the current standards that the city has provided and initiated to the developers, rather than keep extending based on old data, an old way we did business in the city. You need to look out for the citizens that live in that area, that this non-building of the area is drastically affecting the quality of life, because soon- of the area is drastically affecting the quality of life, because soon they will be dealing with the dust and debris that's caused by construction that goes on in the area, the additional trucks coming into the area. Citizens don't want things to be dragged out. They want the area to be built up so they can have peace of mind that they're not going to be dealing with the tractor trailers coming in, or the air hammers being used out at the site by the construction people. Thank you.
Colleagues, do we have a motion?
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Close the public hearing.
So moved?
And if I may, make just one very minor clarification to it. Just in the term section, there was a small blank, which says, shall commence on the effective date and extend to June 18, 2029, which date is a period of blank years from the effective date. Just in the introduction, I'd like it if you would introduce with the very minor amendment, five years, and approximately, it will be approximately 42 days from the effective date, just adding, filling in the blank, if you would, just with the direction to fill in that one blank that we left.
I'll accept the addition to the motion, and this is coming back on consent anyways?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be back in two weeks.
Correct in two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
Not two weeks.
A month.
A month, May 6.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have no public hearing items. I'll go to regular calendar items. Can I ask the city clerk to announce the subject?
Yes. The first regular calendar item is corridor enhancement plan project update.
Ask Albert for the staff report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Pulapati and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the city's gateway corridors are some of the most heavily traveled corridors, not only in the city, but in the entire region. And they're also oftentimes the first impression that visitors may have of the city of Rancho Cordova. So it's really important that these corridors are beautiful, have a unique look to them, but also have a theme that ties them together throughout the city. And Christine Corte has been working on a planning study with that goal, and is going to be providing more information to us this evening.
Thanks, Albert. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council, and members of the public. My name's Christine Corte, and we are excited to present the corridor enhancement plan. So some of our goals today is to provide an outreach update, present a proposed corridor theme and palette, receive input from council and the community, and present the next steps. So a little bit about a project overview. So the goals of the plan are to create a sense of identity in place. As Albert mentioned, our corridors are heavily traveled, and it provides a sense of place for the city of Rancho Cordova, support pedestrian and cyclist-friendly corridors, prioritize the different improvements throughout the city, and identify funding opportunities to implement these improvements. So the main corridors that were studied as part of this plan is Bradshaw Road, Old Placerville Road, Routeier Road, Matherfield Road, Zinfandel Drive, and Sunrise. And to give everyone a little bit of idea of the types of areas that were evaluated, it's medians, interchanges, other opportunities for placemaking and signage enhancements. So the city contracted with Dewberry and Atlas Labs to complete the plan. So the project was kicked off in spring of 2023, and to date, we have completed data gathering, a few rounds of community outreach, and tonight, we're here to present a theme and palette and gather input so we can finalize the plan later this year. So to date, we have completed two rounds of in-person and online surveys, receiving over 200 responses. So a little bit of, on the right, you can see an example of the type of exhibits and interactive elements that were available for the community meetings and also on our online surveys. And some of the comments that we received were better over more trees, enhanced landscaping, addressing safety concerns for bike and pedestrians, screenage and wayfinding, monument signage, and incorporating community art. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric Prince, our landscape architect from Atlas Labs, and he's going to go over some of the proposed themes and palettes.
Good evening. Again, my name is Eric Prince from Atlas Lab, and happy to be here tonight. I was born on May the 4th, so I was really happy to see the stars.
This is also one of the birthday girls' favorite topics.
Yes.
And happy birthday.
Well, so we, as Christine mentioned, we really have looked at each of these quarters, but we've also looked at the broader community and tried to take cues from design themes, knowing that we're not starting from scratch. And so this slide kind of shows some of the initial design themes that we've looked at through our initial studies and conversations with city staff. So Folsom Boulevard, we started to understand what are the elements that have incorporated those improvements. We've even broadened our influence to consider the American River, some of the native trees and ecosystems that are surrounding there, and how might those influence some potential of these quarters. Sunrise Boulevard Streetscape is a newer streetscape project that had some elements that we've looked at and to incorporate. And then we're also keeping in mind the opportunities for unique placemaking throughout. So what are the historic narratives that we can draw inspiration from, and how they might inform some community identification and monument signs? So if anybody's a baker or loved to cook, one of our metaphors that we've talked about internally is we wanted to try to develop a palette of materials or ingredients to make this cake. And so some of the ingredients that we've looked at throughout the palette is, this is a slide of the different categories of native planting, taking cues of oak trees from the American River, and knowing that the streetscape itself is fairly narrow, what are some other streetscape palettes that we can draw inspiration from, from narrow street trees or upright street trees, crepe myrtles, and even baby blue eyes, which we understand to be the city flower. So all of these should be fairly familiar ingredients, but all of this becomes a palette of which we want to get your feedback on to understand, hey, what are the great ingredients that are going to help make a cohesive and a clear identification for those coming into the city? You know, anything from fencing to vertical element signage, hardscaping elements that could be incorporated into considerations. And so if we are looking at those cohesive elements, you know, every good cake, or German chocolate cake I heard earlier, needs a special ingredient, and so placemaking becomes that kind of element of the special ingredient that could add a level of distinction for each of these quarters or adjacent to a school. So we've looked at other elements that could kind of be those difference makers in special areas, whether it be in the median, within some hardscapes, within bulbous, or vertical elements, whether there be community murals or identification signs. So these are kind of a palette of both cohesive and unique elements that we are trying to do. And so one of the things that we're thinking, a great way to make that cake as far as the next steps, is to create a design toolkit for all of these quarters. And so as opposed to doing, you know, different designs for three of these quarters, or pick one, or pick even, we wanted to do a design toolkit, which we call, which is the sample that you see on the right there, to show the palette of materials that could be used, the range of inspirations that could be applied to each of these quarters, and then show a more typical representation of what that might look like through, for example, a rendering that you see on the lower right. And this approach to incorporating a design toolkit will be incorporated into this corridor enhancement report and be a tool that could be sourced to prioritize other improvements throughout the quarter, to pursue grants, and to really have and speak to all of the unique features that Rancho Cordova and how they might be applied to each of these quarters in future opportunities. So we think it's a great resource that can be used for city staff and the council members to help refine and be very intentional about what are the elements that really speak to the city? How can we help beautify it? Because we did hear so much from the community that there is a need for more trees, for more, better landscaping, and to help draw a lot of cohesion together in these quarters and these gateway features. So with that, we are really wanting to make sure that we are, you know, using the right ingredients. And so we want input on some of these images and the features that we presented that could be incorporated into this toolkit, anything that we've missed, or any hierarchy of things that really, I think, you know, draw inspiration from how you might identify what's really unique with the city. So with that, we would like to open it up for comments.
If you're looking for public comment, there is no public comment on this item yet until Helen Wayland-Bishaw. Are you ready for a public comment? Okay. We're ready.
Helen Wayland-Bishaw, again. I'm looking at the areas that you've picked, and I do have concerns for the Routeier area, because when you were putting in the protected bicycle lane, they modified what they did to that area because of the mobile home or modular home communities on that street. They need the width of that street that's left now from the protected bicycle lanes in order to be able to move the rigs in and out that have the modular homes or the mobile homes on them to get them in and out of those communities. So my big concern is that street and what you intend to do with the beautification of the area.
Counsel, any comments?
Yes, so the only comment I would have is that these are all very nice pictures, but at this point, it's so conceptual and nebulous, it's really difficult to comment until there's something a little more firm in place. I mean, because you could do a laundry list, like at this corner, we want a tree, and we want a shrub, and we want little flowers, or something like that. But that's not what's being suggested. It's just kind of like a free-for-all. So the question is, who's going to design it?
And we're, thank you for that comment. And we're specifically bringing this to council at a relatively early stage, so that if there are any specific highlights that you want incorporated into this, we can make sure from the beginning that we can incorporate those comments. And then based on that, we'll make sure that those highlights are a part of the plan, and we can flesh it out more, flesh it out further, and bring it back to the city council for further consideration.
So there's like four slides that show shrubs and pavement, and each one of them has a variety of things on it. So maybe if you put those back up, and people could look at those and see if there's anything missing.
Certainly if there's specific species that you would like to be part of the palette or certain treatments.
There are no palm trees.
Yeah, I was never bringing that up. How do we get more palm trees? So that's two votes for palm trees.
And cowbell.
And cowbell. So I have, so the serious note.
That's because I went to Davis, though. That's why I want cowbell.
Right.
Not Christopher Walken.
So I only have one question. I know the history of Rancho Cordova includes grapevines. Are we going to try to incorporate that anywhere, or is that bush too hard to grow and keep the character of the community? Is it like, just take over, you know, like?
Well, we also have the history of growing hops here, too, but you don't really make that.
I mean, it'd be cool to have some hops. I mean, on one of these.
That would be really cool.
That would be on one of these.
Cries out and catches on fire.
Listen, listen, don't talk negative. I like my hops.
Own wheat on Folsom Boulevard.
You could have some hops and some.
Addressing the grapevine thing, I will say that Stone Creek has all these kind of little monument thingies at the corners, and they all had really cool trellises. And originally, Elliot did plant little grapevines in those trellises, and I don't think there's one of them left.
Okay.
But they need to be, you know, they need to be taken care of.
Right. The only other thing I would do is I really liked how in the Anatolia community, they took stuff that can be used in cooking and included that in the shrubbery. And so you'll see people go and pick up their own rosemary and their own thyme. So if there's a way that we can incorporate some cool, you know, double feature, so it's a vegetable seasoning, and it looks halfway decent, you know?
If I can make one, so looking at the concrete and cobble picture, I'll just give the feedback of that sidewalk is driving me insane looking at that picture, that the number of people that want to jog on that part, I mean, a lot of joggers end up jogging on the road pavement anyways, because it's a little bit softer. But in general, they have some of those out in the South area, where they just put these meandering turns in for no damn reason. And like, people pushing strollers, people in wheelchairs, people that are just jogging that are going to roll their ankle because somebody wanted to be cute and funny. Like, if that's a playground, fine, but that looks like it's a median of a highway with a walkway through it. So again, that doesn't make any sense to me either. But putting useless turns for no reason, please avoid that.
I'm glad Donal brought that up, because we've talked about Laguna Boulevard, and actually even the crazy sidewalks on Sunrise at Anatolia and Douglas, and the fact that they go uphill and downhill for no completely decent reason.
As somebody who has to come onto Herodian to turn onto Sunrise, it's almost a blind turn with where we put the planters and stuff there, that, you know, we wanted the divided sidewalk from the street to the sidewalk. So they put in these bushes that are like four feet tall, but it's raised about three feet off of the ground from where you are. And like, you can't see cars in the right light. Like, so it's.
I'm glad it's not just me.
Yeah, so it's those kinds of things. Now, that being said, like, when somebody came in to talk about, you know, sending mobile homes or manufactured homes down Routeier, we designed it so people wouldn't do that. Like, we don't want trucks and other things like that. That's why we made it a tight turn. That's why people came in here and said, you put in the curbs, and I can't make a right turn. And my comment to them was, well, you need to practice more, because everybody else can figure it out. But we did that so that people will walk slower, or will drive slower there, and you'll feel more safe walking there, which, again, with any of these things, it all comes down, and I think Siri even brought this up at one point, that like, a lot of these things that we do, and these traffic calming things that we do, there's a bunch of drivers that don't like it. That's why we did it, is to get them to slow down, right? And we expect drivers to complain about that kind of stuff. So when I look at this, I mean, from a safety standpoint, like, yeah, don't make a sidewalk that looks like that thing. Would be great. The other thing I would say about the black metal fencing, if there are alternatives from a color standpoint, I know when we saw some of the first renderings with the U Center, that was kind of one of my comments, was please don't make this just wrapped in fencing. And I think you guys did a really good job of putting some nicer-looking artsy stuff to break up the palette and stuff like that. I really liked that, because, you know, as we remove cyclone fencing in some places, this tends to be the only thing that we get, or something similar to that. And I would just say, like, take the U Center as an example to mimic for other projects. And, you know, that was early on in the conversation about just, you know, if we are going to fence this thing off, like, let's not make it all just so uniform like that. But again, I think you've done a really good job of that in the past anyways. I don't see a lot of.
We can think of several really cool examples of that.
The other thing I would say I don't see on here, and I know from a root standpoint, it can be a little rough, but evergreens, so redwoods and other things, I don't know how well those necessarily do. I mean, obviously, we don't need pine trees like we have at the post office, where they're just dropping that stuff all the time, but in general, you know, some more things along those routes. Like, I mean, crepe myrtles are nice, especially in the next month or two, but, you know, they don't get very big, they don't offer a lot of shade. They're pretty in decorative situations, but if I put my Air District hat on, I know even when some of the newer developments had gotten proposed, we had backed off of some of the shade tree requirements that we had for the divided or the separated sidewalks, and we started putting in things like crepe myrtle that, you know, 15 years later are still five feet tall. And we started putting in things like crape myrtle that, you know, 15 years later are still five feet tall. To look at something that has a little bit more of a shade structure to it, especially along sidewalks to add the shaded stuff, which I think is in our standard anyway. So I don't think I'm convincing anybody anything.
That's another good point, though, Donald. If we want people to walk on these sidewalks, it's got to be hospitable. And Steve Harriman and our landscape architect have put a lot of effort into maintaining the trees in Cat Village and, and even in the medians where this one particular kind of tree died and they had to come back. And I think they actually had to replace that tree with the same kind, but all you have to do is look around at this time of year and the redwoods, redwoods are glorious. So California redwood is a great idea. Annials, California natives are a great idea. I am only concerned that if we plant nothing but these baby blue eyes, what happens if they don't like growing here?
I talked to them. They're good.
But you make a good point. Annials in general, like, I mean, think about DC right about now and over the next month or so, the daffodils, the cherry blossoms are kind of over, but like, in general, like, there's that period if you, if you show up at the right time and like, that's what my backyard looks like at the moment is daffodils and irises and whatever else are all kicking off right now. And it'll all be gone in about a month. And I know there's a little bit more cleanup to it, but, you know.
But you can underplant daffodils and you put them down first and then you put something on top of it. Like I've grown daffodils under.
I've grown citronella in the middle of mine.
What's, what's, what's teladoro? It's the daylilies, under the, under the daylilies. And so we had daylilies all summer long and then we had daffodils in the springtime and it was perfect.
We have a bunch of those, too.
Yeah.
But Donald, you bring up a really good point about like having like cherry blossoms. If you have one theme that really blossoms at one point, it'd be a really attractive attraction to come to all of these.
Those are really hard to keep healthy. They're about to cut down like 400 of them in DC.
Like I said, not cherry blossoms, like I said.
The, the elevation of the, the Potomac.
Well, the, the title estuary, yeah.
Yeah, the title basin.
Yeah.
But that's also something you could consider. If there's some, I mean, maybe not baby blue eyes if they don't bloom, but something along that level. If we have something that blooms at one point and all of these will have that theme, so it'll be an attraction point.
I, I, I guess, in, in a perfect world, like, how cool would it be if we planted enough stuff that we had like our own mini super bloom that was almost like, would bring tourism in at some point.
Like Auburn's having right now.
Yeah. I mean, they have elevation on their side and that's all natural that we, that they didn't plant. But if we were thinking along those lines, like, I think there's, there's something to talk about there.
The cemetery looks great right now with all their cherry trees blooming.
Yeah. I mean, I, in general, like, I mean, if I look at what I planted in my yard once I moved in there, it's all the stuff we just talked about. Is what I put in.
No, it's not.
So my comments were on, I like that you have the word decorative lighting in daylight. So I have no idea what kind of lighting you're talking about, but decorating lighting's good. And I'm not sure on the color concrete. Are you asking us to pick a color? We have that choice or just colored concrete? Yes or no? Like blue concrete, that'd be cool, with baby blue eyes.
Actually, these lights are the same ones we have in Cat Village and along Folsom Boulevard.
I'll throw one other thing out here, only because you said colored concrete. I've been asking for years that Sacramento, I think, was the first one I ever saw that started coloring the bike lanes green. Can we ever look at coloring them like yellow or gold as in, you know, to remember our, our gold, our gold rush history? Other colors like that.
Gold's a very hard color.
I think green's the national standard.
I asked before and there was not a standard, like that wasn't a color that you had to use.
There are manual, manual, California manual and uniform traffic control devices standards. There is some ability to vary, vary on those. One idea we've been looking at is certainly the bicycle lanes, like you mentioned, is an opportunity. We've also seen some really cool examples of crosswalks using different art and colors. And so that's something that we're quite interested in.
Lavender Heights in downtown is a great example of that.
You know, I did see the, the one in Korea where, you know, it's plain, but when it rains, it really comes up a different color, like art.
Okay, I'm down for that.
It's like a mood shirt.
I'll vote for that one.
No, it, art, art starts showing up, so they paint some sort of a mural and then it's plain, but when it rains, the mural shows up.
That's funny.
I'll, I'll send you guys a picture.
It's a water-activated sidewalk.
They've also done. They've also done a huge. Albert, I think you, I think I sent you the information on the Street Out project in Jackson, Mississippi that Rebecca Garrison shared.
Okay, do we have what we need or do we need a motion on this one? No motion, okay. Okay, then we'll move on to the next topic. City Clerk to announce the next one.
Fiscal year 2023 through 2024 mid-year financial update report.
Yay, Kim.
All right. Good evening. Kim Duran-Carragio, Administrative Services Director with the city. Just waiting for the presentation to get pulled up, but I will go ahead and start. This is going to be a mid-year financial update for the current fiscal year, which is the first year of the two-year budget that we just adopted this past year. So no budget study sessions this spring, which is great news, I'm sure for everyone. The mid-year financial review while we. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. The mid-year financial review, while it is technically a mid-year, looking at it as of December 31st, we, I do tend to hold off and look at finances between December and the end of February, just because of the timing delays on some of our major revenues that come in. So to get a better idea of how the city's performance is doing, it's better to take a look at it over kind of that first eight-month period. I'm going to progress that. Thank you. So overall, city finance, city finances at the mid-year point remain strong, although I will say we are seeing signs of slowing in comparison to the past few fiscal years. So what we've seen in the past handful of fiscal years, really since right the year with the onset of COVID, we saw that, you know, general fund revenues took, really took off. We saw a 26% increase over those four years since 2019, 20. And that's, that is a much higher year-over-year increase than what we would typically expect to see. So when I say a slowdown, what I'm saying is that we're probably not going to continue to see those types of year-over-year increases. It doesn't mean that we're, you know, going to necessarily see a decline, but just starting to see a ratchet back on some of those. And as you can see, so this, the last column on the right shows kind of general fund revenues as of the end of December. And you'll see, you know, many of those are quite low. We're only at 26% of our budget as of the half-year point. The biggest one that you'll see is property tax, which at the, as of December, has not been received by the city yet. And I'll talk a bit more about some of those major revenues in just a minute. But overall, most of these revenues are trending where we would expect to see them at this point in the year. So starting with property tax, the property tax revenue budget for this year is 7% above last year. And while I did say that, you know, we are starting to see some slowdown, property tax tends to be, because it is basically a year behind. What we're seeing is revenue gains this year are reflective of what was happening in, in the housing market during both 2022 and early 2023. So overall, we saw a lot of homes turnover in 2022 at very high assessed values. And so that helped our property taxes for the current year. So overall, they are trending to meet budget. And we are, however, seeing somewhat of a slowdown with higher mortgage rates, starting to limit the number of homes turning over year over year. And where I tend to look at to see that is really with the property transfer tax. And this is a tax, it's 55 cents on every thousand dollars of assessed value. So it tends to be a good gauge of both the number of homes turning over as well as kind of where the market value is. And you'll just kind of see, just for comparison purposes, the first installment for this fiscal year is $202,000, whereas a year ago at this time, it was $367,000. So a 45% decrease from where we were a year ago. So that gives us some indication of what's happening in the market.
But one, and I'm just sharing this, especially from our conversations with Elk Grove Unified, the fact that that's down on existing home sales is also driving the reason that like 20% or more of the, the, the general sales market for, for homes right now is new homes. And in a normalized housing environment, it's usually 2% to 3%. So the fact that we're still doing as many permits as, as we're doing and growing as fast as we're growing isn't because people want to buy new homes, it's because that's all that's for sale. So even with, with a heightened interest rate environment, we're, we're growing faster as a city because we have room to grow. So. Your mic's on.
Remember when you said you, you've seen a pullback? Is this the amount that you were feeling?
Well, no, the pullback is exactly what Kim's talking about, that it's, it's that we're not seeing these resetting's of, of homes to get higher values and, and reset the Prop 13 calculator. So this is coming in lower. I'm just saying that, what, we did 700 and something permits last year or 600 and something, which was one of our strongest years that we've had, even though the interest rates are high, no one wants to sell their house and get out of the really good 2%, 3% mortgage that they have. So there's nothing for sale. Therefore, new homes look even better and people are willing to pay that because it's all they can get. So I was just saying that from that standpoint, our population is growing in a way that if interest rates kind of came down and you had people all of a sudden start selling their homes, that could be a more attractive purchase than buying a new home from a builder.
Yeah, I will take a hazard a guess that we will probably have the second most permits we've ever issued for single family this fiscal year. Obviously, there was a year in like 2005 or something that was over 1,000 or something. So we won't hit that, but we will probably hit the highest number of building permits this year for single family.
And that's something that we didn't necessarily predict. It was just that the housing market has gotten so tight because there's not enough transactions, which is what this thing on the bottom is telling you. But because of that, you're seeing 20-something percent of, of sales are new homes, which, again, that's, you know, arguably 10 times more than it usually is. Sorry, thank you.
No. So moving on to kind of our next.
Going to use our banker at all times.
Our, our next major general fund revenue is sales tax and each sales tax has been a huge driver of those general fund revenue increases that we've seen over the last four years. Similar to just overall general fund revenues going up 26% over that timeframe. Our sales tax revenues went up by 27%. So they did really kind of set the stage for a lot of the growth that we saw. And our budget for the current year, so it's at 22.3 million, which was a 5% increase over where we ended last year. However, we are starting to see some signs of slowing on sales tax revenues. You know, some of the thought is that inflation, which was sky-high over the last few years, causing prices to be quite high, has started to slow down. So some of those costs have come back down. And also just overall consumer sentiment is starting to slow down. So while it remains strong, nothing has fallen off. It is just slowing from where we saw during some of the height of COVID. So overall, the current estimates for this year estimate that sales tax will come in about 1.5 million below budget. That's our best guess at this time. We still have yet to receive kind of the critical fourth quarter analysis, which we will get later this week. So we still have a lot of information forthcoming that might change that number as well as there's always a possibility of one-time payments, which have come in in prior years and really helped bolster sales tax. Any of those could come in at some time to change that number. But at this point in time, that's what the forecast looks like.
What would be a, what's an example of a one-time payment?
So sometimes like when we have major tenant TI projects here in the city, they're buying major equipment. Those are supposed to be use taxes coming into the city. Sometimes it takes maybe sometimes years for those to catch up and get actually allocated to the city, though.
I think we have somebody doing some major projects right now, somewhere near here, I thought.
We do.
Okay.
So that remains, at this time, you know, remains to be seen. As we were talking about just a couple of slides ago, building permits, overall, our building permit revenue is exceeding, is on track to exceed our budget assumptions. And whereas in the past couple of years, we really saw commercial permits carrying permit, the total building permits, we're seeing kind of that flip back to residential building permit activity leading the way. So as of the mid-year mark, at, at the end of the December, there were already 417 permits issued. And I know, I think we are well past 600 at this point. On the commercial side, revenues are lower than originally projected. We do see some impact from the moratorium that is in place, as well as we do have the issuance of permits for two large commercial projects, North Point Industrial Area and Sunrise Apartments, which have helped contribute to that. So overall, building permit activity looks really strong and is expected to meet or exceed the budget. Just a few other revenues that I want to quickly mention. So TOT or transient occupancy tax. Again, we're trending slightly above the same time last year. And last year, we did have a closure of a major hotel, the Doubletree. So we had a few months of that hotel operating before it closed. And this year, that hotel's not been open. So overall, though, we're still kind of keeping up with where we were at this point last year and expecting to meet the budget. Another category with the higher interest rates, we're seeing a great return on investments, something we haven't seen for a very long time. And overall, those are on track to exceed the budget due to those higher interest rates. So as a whole, even though we did see a slowdown with sales tax, I do expect that general fund revenues as a whole should come in, you know, still tracking to come in right around where our budget forecast predicted. Flipping over to the other side to expenditures, kind of similar, you know, it takes a while sometimes for some of these invoices to come in and for bills to get paid. So as of the half-year mark, we're not quite trending anywhere near the halfway point. But it gives us, starts to give us some idea of where the year is heading. And so kind of some things on, on general fund expenditures, it is trending below.
Go back one slide, just really quick.
Yeah.
Oh. So what, what was the, the big increase in 22, 23?
That was when we purchased the property, the property in Stone Creek, as well as the transfer out to the capital fund for the Mills Crossing project.
Thanks.
So for the general fund expenditures, overall, we're seeing it trend below budget at this point in time. Personal costs are trending a bit below budget. And the contract with the Sack County Sheriff is also trending below budget as a result of some staffing vacancies. We are seeing higher than budgeted costs on the legal services side as a result of ongoing litigation. So that's something that we're going to continue to closely monitor. But all that said, we do expect that, you know, right now, we're still tracking to end the year right around our budget amount. But something we'll continue to track closely. And then switching gears to the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. So both Measure H and Measure R revenues were budgeted at 12.5 million for the current year. And similar to what I had said a few slides back on sales tax, due to that kind of overall general sales tax slowdown that we're seeing, the new revised estimate puts revenues closer to about 11.7 million for the current year. We are, staff is currently kind of identifying and monitoring the expenditure side to see where there might be the potential for savings to minimize the impact to any programs. So we'll continue to monitor that and return to council kind of closer to the end of the fiscal year with an update and some proposals.
So is 11.7 the total or 11.7 per age and also?
Per each.
So like 20, 3, 4?
Yes. Sorry, should, should clarify that.
So wait, they're, they're 12.5, yeah, a piece.
Each.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I started to read that and, and think that one of them was 11.7, one was 12.5.
Respectively, yes. We did 12.5 for each, but. And that is the end of my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you meet up with the other finance people that run cities, do they get jealous of you?
I, I do try not to brag, but yes.
I know it comes up when I talk to other city council members. I can imagine people would envy your job. Yeah.
When we're doing our Measure H, Measure R stuff and we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, should we cut back and then add in later once we know final numbers?
So part of what we're coming forward. So part of what we're coming forward with for the next year, we are planning with an eleven point seven million dollar budget for next year as well. So we've made some adjustments.
So does that, uh I'm always, because I know our budget kind of cycles. That doesn't affect this Measure H grant, or does we should take into account when we're going through what we want to keep and don't keep?
For this upcoming year.
It's one we're about to do.
Yes, so.
Eleven point seven.
Yes, that's that's the overall number.
And then if it came back bigger, would we adjust it then? Like if there's overages, would we then relook at everything or put some to the side and say if we get more money, we can take these things on?
I, yeah, I would say usually we come back towards the end of the year because it's not usually that kind of cycle is not, we don't know immediately in three months if kind of we're trending. So usually what will happen is we'll come back towards the end of the um kind of fiscal year to have that conversation about if there are surpluses or additional funds and how do we want to use those. Um but that that is something that we've done typically in the past.
If you were to look at this, it's just like one point six million, one point six million less than what was budgeted.
In totality between the two.
Yeah, between the two.
Yeah. So I mean, that's not a huge amount compared to.
Not huge. I just always.
Well, it's it's also the buffer for exactly what you're saying, but keep in mind too that a large amount of what we talk about from these measures get gets transferred to reserves for future projects.
Right.
So the the rounding off ends up being the the transfer when we know what we got, right?
Gotcha.
That that tends to be the, like, we budget for the community grants and that kind of stuff, and then Randy K and the team do their their stuff. But the like legacy project, three million dollar transfer becomes three point four, but that's how much is there, right? Isn't that how we tend to do it?
That's that's how we've tended to do it in the past years.
So it's just the extra is going to go to our legacy projects.
Or or, yeah. Or a player to be named at a future date, right? Right, like, if we end up with the money, then we'll spend it at some other time.
Yeah, I would say Kim probably can answer this too, that this isn't a reduction enough to make us concerned for as the cash flows of these different things come in. This is probably close enough that for the current year that it doesn't give us, you know, too much of a heartburn or headache. But it's, but we want to make sure as we prepare for next year that we're, you know, fiscally responsible and kind of making sure we're going with that.
Well, and 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 I think what's what the most important thing about this, and even when we get to the community grants, to to compare it to other cities around without criticizing other cities around. But the vast majority of the tax measures that have been raised in this region are not spent in the way that we are spending them. They're mostly going towards pension and unfunded healthcare liabilities. So the fact that, like, and I'm saying, most if not all, and then still dipping into their general fund, and I'm not going to name names. But like you look at ours, and I remember when when we were raising funds for for Measure R, and somebody commented to me, and they go, you know what I like about Ranch Cordova, when they when they have a tax measure, you spend it in the community. It doesn't just all go to things that have already been paid for and commitments that are already made. Which again, those cities have to speak for themselves and and, you know, some of them have been around for a hundred fifty years and they've got more legacy costs than we do. But when you look at this and we say that we have, you know, we're taking this much off of the top. Imagine if if you looked at that, ninety percent of it get didn't go to anything in the community. It just went to paying for people that used to work here, right? Like, that's what a lot of cities are struggling with. And it's one of the reasons that as as we look at this and we look at revenue neutrality, that whether it's how much we're spending on public safety per capita and all these other things. That's why I joke when I ask him that that question, like, when you look at this slide and you compare what we're spending in the community this year, it's, I mean, it's so much better than than what it looks in just by every other city in this region.
Yeah, I heard that there's a a local city, we're not going to talk about it, that has a twenty nine percent cut across everything. Whereas we're trying to figure out.
And and they have as much tax measures as we do.
That's crazy.
They have a, they have a one percent, we did, like, they did a half, we did a half, then they came back and did it around the same time that we did. And.
Their money's all gone.
It's all gone. Yeah. And then some. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do I open it up for public comment? Okay, public comments?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Public comment closed.
Good job doing the public comment.
Yes, we got burnt once, not again. City clerk, the next topic, please.
The American Rescue Plan Act ARPA update.
More money.
Hey, Kim, do you have to travel a long way?
Just the anticipation of the PowerPoint right now.
You're not excited about it? So are we.
All right, so this item is an update on American Rescue Plan Act funds. And kind of to just remind uh everyone kind of where we are, that back in twenty twenty one, the city received fifteen point eight million dollars of funding um as a result of American Rescue Plan Act. And the guidelines say that these funds need to be committed by the end uh calendar year end of twenty twenty four and spent money out the door by the end of twenty twenty six. Uh the focus, there was a big focus, there's been a lot of different iterations of the guidance, it's changed many times over. But um a big focus was on benefiting areas that were hit hardest by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that was one of the definitions that was used, were areas within the Qualified Census Tract. So uh council approved an overall spending plan in twenty twenty two and staff began implementation of the approved projects and programs. A portion of the funds, two point five million, uh was to be set aside for projects that were initiated um through a community outreach process. And so that began in twenty twenty three to solicit ideas on what some of those projects could be. So just as a starting point, uh to give an update on some of the dollars uh that have been allocated and spent to date. So the first category was kind of this catchall of COVID nineteen response and recovery, economic development and community development initiatives. And overall, a budget allocation of four point eight five million. And we have spent about three point three million uh or encumbered as of the end of December. Affordable housing, homelessness and assistance to households, uh next category, about three point seven million of that. Um and those two projects that are kind of highlighted in red, I'm going to come back to on the next slide in just a minute to just talk a bit more about that. But at this point in time, seven hundred and twenty seven thousand has been spent or encumbered in that category. Public works, infrastructure and maintenance, we had a number of projects that have either been completed or are currently underway for a total of four point five million dollars. And about four million has been spent or encumbered as of uh December thirty first. And then the final category, um which is, as I mentioned, was investments in neighborhoods to improve health outcomes based on a community input process. This was a two point five million dollar set aside, uh which we're going to provide some more information on tonight. So so far, none of those dollars have been spent, but we do have a spending plan that we are going to present. So basically, um over half has been spent to date. There are three projects uh or three areas where no funds have been spent yet. And so the first one, Mather Veterans Village Phase Four. Uh the county, Sacramento County, committed two million dollars of their ARPA funding to this project to match our two million dollar commitments. Overall, four million dollars of ARPA funds are um allocated to this project. There is currently um some environmental site analysis uh underway on that pro, on the site, future site of Mather Veterans Village Phase Four, and that is expected to wrap up around the end of April. So we will, based on kind of the results of that analysis, we will have a better idea of the timing, the potential timing of that project and whether or not it's still going to be feasible under the ARPA timeline uh that I noted at the beginning of the presentation. So we expect within the next four to six weeks to have an update on that project.
You're saying on Woodbury?
No, this is MVV, yes.
Okay. I'm more interested in the next one and how that timeline is going.
So the next one, the crossings at Woodbury, um a application for uh tax credits has been submitted. And I think we're waiting to hear uh on this next round of funding if this project is allocated any funding. And then there is going to be, if we are not successful in this round, we have another opportunity coming up this summer uh to try once again and see if we can get tax credits to kind of make that budget happen. And I know Stefan is also here in the room if you want him to provide more detail.
Not necessarily, I mean, I I get that it sounds like we have two rounds of TCAC to to catch it. But if we don't, and we've been at this a while, like I've been here eleven years and four months or something, and we were about to build it the whole time I've been here. So if not, do we have a contingency of where we would put that instead?
So we're coming up, we have some ideas internally, and so based on kind of how these things play out over the next couple of months, we will return to council and, you know, either say, hey, these are ready to go, or we have some ideas on how we could reallocate it.
When we looked at the five that that asked for local funds, like I, like, we all said, like, okay, Mather Veterans Village, sure, and Woodbury, because like we're to 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 use a poker term, we're pot committed on this, like, 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 we want this, we've we've made commitments, it's been there for a long time, we want to see it built, but still not built. And if it's time sensitive funds, like, yeah, just I would, I would ask that we be prepared to put that somewhere else to make sure that we don't return that to the federal government.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh we we are definitely keeping an eye on it and have a plan in place to make sure those funds get spent somewhere.
It's definitely going to be spent in the next ten years. Definitely.
Two and a half years. Um and then the last uh area where no funds had been spent yet is this area where um investments in neighborhoods to improve health outcomes and some of the community driven project ideas, which we're here to kind of talk uh further about this evening. So just as a reminder, we committed, uh we started a community survey process back in May of twenty twenty three. Went out to residents uh living in the Qualified Census Tract, asked them a series of questions to get some input on where they wanted to see projects or some of their ideas. We came and presented some of that feedback from uh the survey, as well as some initial project ideas to the council in September. And based on the feedback that we received then, we further went and had another community outreach meeting in November uh at at Cordova Meadows School to kind of talk about kind of the main ideas and project um focus. And there are four areas that uh the focus discussion was on, streetlights, traffic calming, uh crime prevention, and also a dog park. So those were sort of the four projects that were discussed at this community meeting.
Did anybody tell them we don't run parks?
We told them they don't, we don't run parks, but we have a idea that we'd like to propose to you this evening.
Oh, God.
So I'm going to pass it over uh to Edgar Medina, who's going to talk a bit further about the streetlight project.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Kim. Um Vice Mayor, council members, Edgar Medina, Public Works Department. Uh happy to be here to talk about some potential projects that we presented to the residents during the November outreach. So we we identified four projects, as Kim mentioned, uh primarily in the Cordova Meadows, Cordova Gardens, Mills Park Terrace, and then the the dog park within the White Rock Community Park area. Just kind of going in in order, um the the Cordova Meadows component of the project is really tied along West Loma and Loma Loop and La Placita, which is that that dark blue area that I kind of highlighted in the middle there. And that's really driven by, or the scope is really focused on streetlights and traffic calming. Cordova Gardens, which is primarily on Doll Street, is we're proposing streetlights. Uh Mills Park Terrace is a traffic calming project that's primarily is focused on Mills Tower Drive. And again, back to the dog park on the easterly part of the White Rock uh Community Park. So on the streetlight project, we're actually proposing a a solar project, a solar uh streetlight project. We we actually had some uh some boards for the community uh event where we had a dotting exercise where we identified uh approximately forty four locations that the residents provided input on. So everything in blue that's highlighted there with the red, with the blue dot, kind of focuses intersections and or crossings. Uh so some of those areas are actually currently mid block crossings. But they're really primarily at intersections to kind of enhance the the safety at those those uh crosswalks and and other features. So same thing on Dawes, we primarily focused on the on the intersections uh for a street light. So we are proposing solar powered, uh the the technology has come quite a, uh come along quite a way. And it does have the same kind of performance standards that that the traditional LED has. One of the things that as far as the next steps that we'll kind of circle back around is we do have a lot of community engagement. We do, in terms of the people and the residents that own the properties we're proposing streetlights, we do want to make sure that we touch base with every forty four property owner to make sure that they understand that a a streetlight is coming um along their property. Uh but it will be situated within the city's right of way. The traffic calming project is primarily focused also on West Loma and Mills Tower Park uh or Mills Tower Drive. Uh we were very fortunate that we actually had a NTMP project, or the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Project, Phase Six. We were able to extract two segments and actually bring that uh into the the fold of the ARPA project, which really addressed the the community's concern both for uh speeding and and other uh traffic calming uh requests that came through. So it was, it's going to include speed humps, uh bull bouts, striping, both along both corridors.
Um and another project idea that came from the community was their desire to see a dog park. Uh and uh in collaboration with CRPD, uh we've been talking about potential dog park uh located at White Rock Community Park. And uh as you'll see on this, the map up here, uh it would be located in that far corner where the star is. And so overall, this would be a collaboration with them uh to have it built in a section of White Rock Park. So just uh to give an idea of the location of some of these improvements, you'll see that different neighborhoods and parts of the city that these uh proposed projects are uh located in. And again, overall, a two point five million dollar budget for this project with about two million dollars of it being allocated to the streetlights and traffic calming initiatives that we just went over and about a half million dollars uh for the installation of a dog park at White Rock Park. So that brings us to the end of our presentation. And kind of next steps would be, as Edgar mentioned, to do some outreach to residents on the streetlight plan. Um that should not say RCPD, it should say CRPD. For if the construction of a dog park, we would have to enter into an agreement with CRPD uh for that and also uh finalize the streetlight and traffic calming designs for construction. That I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
So um quick question, the Ranch Cordova Park District. When the um, did you look at the master plan for their big thing that they're going to try to change the White Rock that park into? Because they have this huge idea of what they're going to do, and I don't know if if a dog park is in their actual master plan. I'm actually certain it's not, and they have this big thing they want to do to it. So I mean, that all changes in about six months, but until that six months happen, we should, you should take into account and pull that whole master plan up and have a talk with them about that, because I'm pretty sure that they have a their own idea for that piece of property right there. But I love the idea of more lights and stuff in our traffic calming idea. I think that's amazing. I think that's really, really a great idea, especially seeing us using our dollars to really. I mean, I've heard multiple times how many communities love the fact that we're able to upgrade our streets while everyone's tripping over pennies. The fact that you found a way to actually get lights and stuff in there in these areas that are dark at night is great. So good job on that.
City clerk, any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item.
Council, any other comments or questions?
Have we talked to the Park District about that project?
We have, we have had several, I have had several conversations with them.
They're positive about that.
They are excited about the idea of a dog park there. They said the community in that area has been asking for one for years. So they think it's a good location and a good collaboration.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely know that Dog Park has been a most requested park, so thank you for listening to the dog pet baby owners. Yeah.
Is Hagan the only one we have?
It would be great, it would be great to get one over there and one over in Annapolis in that area.
Yeah, I mean, there's one across the street at the county animal shelter too, but, yeah, the all, literally, the only one in the city is at Hagan.
Yeah, or we just use the old shooting range.
I mean, in Davis, there was an unofficial one at a at a cemetery, so, you know.
Okay.
The Davis one? Okay.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, concerns, comments on this topic, thank you, Kim.
That was it?
I don't think there's a motion.
Yeah, no motion, but this is direction that we're going to move forward with these projects. With hearing, you know, no concerns, we're going to come back with contracts and other things associated with putting these into action.
Awesome. City clerk, can you announce the next topic, please?
Yes, fiscal year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty six, Community Enhancement, sorry, twenty twenty five, Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Grant Applications.
Welcome, Randy K. Stevens.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Randy K. I'm one of your analysts working on the Community Enhancement Investment Fund, and I'd also like to thank Lindsay Samples for being here, who's also on our team. And I'd like to thank Kim for her help in preparing for this presentation as well. And I'd like to thank Kim for her help in preparing for this presentation as well. Uh, tonight is the launch of the grant cycle for the public process to share with the council what applications we received. There are no decisions to be made this evening, we simply want to make sure you're aware of everyone who applied. And I can happily show you that a hundred and twenty three applications came through on our new grant system.
Up or down?
Up. Eight over last year.
And all hundred and twenty three met all your requirements of how to apply?
No, no.
No, just how to apply, because, you know?
I will, I will, I will get through more details as we get into this presentation about the uh the process.
Okay.
So again, no decisions tonight, just an overview of uh of the applications that were received. And I wanted to show the timeline of how we anticipate uh coming back to you for the decision making process.
I like the new logo, by the way.
Thank you, I would like to thank our communications team for working on that. It incorporates both the city logo as well as the wording for CEIS. Uh, we will officially launch it in twenty four, twenty five through our um media kit that we give to each of the grantees upon the award. All right, uh, where were we? All right, so tonight we are here for an overview, this is in fact the tenth year of the grant application submission cycle. And happy to sh- share that we do have, again, a hundred and twenty three applications that came through. But before we get there, I want to make sure we stop and check in about kind of the current allocations that we anticipate for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, you've got a pie chart in front of you that shows the legacy projects at about twenty five percent. And the community grants, um, including arts, culture, history, entertainment, sports, education, as well as other, we're currently showing an allocation of about twenty seven percent of the total eleven point seven million dollar budget. Then eighteen percent for public safety initiatives, fifteen percent for infrastructure and public work programs, ten percent for the operations of legacy projects, including our youth center. And then administration and communications is roughly five percent of the total budget. All right, hundred and twenty three grant applications received, we did have six withdraw from the process and that left a total of a hundred and seventeen active applications. In total, uh, looking at all of the requests that came in, it's roughly nine million dollars in requests for funding. And we anticipate um bringing to two million dollars worth of recommendations. And each year, the council does make its allocations and some of those include multi-year projects. Currently, about one million dollars has already been allocated by councils of past fiscal years. We will be coming back to on April twenty third with staff recommendations on those applications.
Hey, Micah, um, the projects that I've been working for that we didn't, when do you want those?
So I think if there are, you know, kind of other council oriented projects, those would cut, great to be come up on the night of the twenty third that we could kind of add that to the conversation and so.
So, May, May twenty third?
Uh, April twenty third.
April twenty third.
As one of your colleagues, can I, could I ask that you do that a lot sooner so that staff can actually weigh in and give recommendations and evaluations on it?
Is that okay?
The sooner the better, right, for all of you?
So I I think with those ones that didn't, weren't part of the application process, so the ones that were submitted, I think that would probably be something um that we can talk about if there's ones that you have, we could do some evaluation on some of those projects or at least maybe include them in the packet. But I think we probably will not include them into the normal review process, because we want to honor the process that was taken into the review. But I will say, if there are some that um you're interested in, feel free to send them to staff and we can maybe make that a part of the package instead of it being, you know, kind of at the at the workshop itself.
It's been tougher when we've, and I I I've done this myself, so I, like, I'm blaming me too. But like, when we come to this and it's like, yeah, I want to do something like that, and then we all sit here, scratch our head and go, thirty grand, forty grand, okay, fine. And then six months later, we figure out what the heck that was. So as much as we can, let's not do that.
I got the exact amount they need and all the stuff.
If you ever, like, an actual proposal.
I didn't have time to, like, in all honesty, we were so busy doing everything at council, I didn't have time to run it all the way through and get it all the way in in time. But I want to bring it forward and it's.
Yeah, if it, something like that sounds a lot more flushed out than sometimes what we've done where it's like.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we should have, and I don't want to pick on anybody because we've all done it.
Yeah.
Um, but like, I don't know, I want to have the, an art thing, or or what, I don't know, I'll let you know. And it's, you see what I'm saying that like, that's. Okay.
And and I think, and I think there has been conversations with staff about some of the projects that I think we're probably talking about. And I think we have a much, we'll have a much clearer idea of kind of what those requests are at the time.
I mean, like, like, an example, I I think me and David were the one that came up, but it's like, we should have some sort of field trip thing. And this before we came up with like a field trip budget.
Yeah.
And we said, we should like send every fourth grader to F E Y O, but nobody knew how much that would cost and how anybody would pay for it. And so like, it was just kind of, make it fifty grand, let's see if that, if that's enough, like, right, you know what I mean?
I I will say sometimes every year we get new and interesting applications and it leads to some interesting conversations about buckets and different things. But we'll probably have some of those again this year. But um I think for the ones that we're talking about, I think we'll be pretty clear what those specific requests are so that we can address those pretty concretely on the twenty third.
Okay.
So we will be coming back to you on April twenty third during the special workshop focused on the Community Enhancement Investment Fund. And then if necessary, we'll come back again on the sixth and the twentieth of May. Um, and then we are hoping for the adoption of the resolution at the first meeting in June. Um, and if for some reason it's not done, then it'd be the second meeting in June. So then we can start contracting by July one, when the fiscal year starts.
Can I, can I, only because you just told me to say it. Um, can we remind folks for April twenty third, and hopefully this is recorded and applicants watch this meeting and remember what I'm about to say? If you get recommended for funding, the odds that you're not getting funding are very, very low. That meeting ends up becoming a very tight meeting with a lot of stuff to talk about. Please don't come here and thank us or come here and sell your project or come here and make a public comment that slows down the meeting and takes away from the conversations that we need to have about the stuff that we disagree about. So for, again, for any of you on April twenty third and at any point during this process, if you're recommended for funding, you're probably going to get funding. Please leave the council and the other applicants that are still selling for their stuff the time to do that. And so if you got funding, send us an email and say thank you if you want. And thank Randy K. and the rest of the team for their brilliance in recommending you. But please save the public comment time for the people that are still waiting in the wings to figure out if they're going to get funding. Okay, I'm off my soapbox.
To to that point, do do the applicants get notified when they are approved or they know it once you? Right, so they don't get a personal email before?
Yes, we do communicate with our applicants about the process as it is taking place. So they receive tonight's agenda and were notified that no action was necessary on their part. So I simply let them know the council meeting was happening and that they could watch it or even come in person, but that no action was necessary. I will let them.
The council members have encouraged them to send us written correspondence about their project.
I can include that in the email update that I send to all applicants, um, that they should review the staff recommendations and, um, you know, come to participate or watch online. And, you know, they still can participate, I'm going to let them know the public process and the procedures that are, you know, open to every single uh person that wants to come to council, but I can share your uh remarks with them.
Is that your last slide?
Yeah.
Okay, any public comment on this one?
Yes, we have one public comment, Darryl Langwell.
Uh, good evening, Vice Mayor Poli-Poli and council members, Darryl Langwell from the Vineyards neighborhood. I just filled out my ballot for the stormwater drain system and I voted yes because I think this is critical infrastructure for the city, it's going to affect everybody in the city that lives here, everybody that works here. If we have a problem, it's going to protect us all. The thing that bothers me about having to do that is for the past several years, you have this process that you're starting tonight where you're giving away millions of dollars to special interest groups and pet projects. And it seems like the whole of the city and the safety, the safety of the city ought to come first, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. So no motion on this one, okay.
Tonight is information only, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, that was the last topic. Um, council members, any requests for future agenda topics?
No, but I'd like to say happy birthday to my most amazing, wonderful person in my life, my wife. And Linda. My wife first, then Linda. The mo- most powerful two women in my life.
Happy birthday to the lovely ladies, and with that, I adjourn today's meeting.